Good afternoon, good morning. I know some people want to get home after the presidential debate, so we'll work at this. Madam Clerk, will you call quick?
Mayor Wood.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Faleen.
Madam Clerk, at your time, consent calendar, one through eight, three through eight, excuse me.
Consent calendar items include items three through eight. We have no requests.
Thank you. Counsel, motion approved. We have a second approval. No body pulling, please vote, please. Thank you very much. Chair, thank you for your time. It's been approved. Uh, let's go to...
Motion... there it goes. Motion approved, five out.
Madam Clerk, first of all, closing processions are approved from our city attorney's case.
Thank you. We're meeting on item one. Counsel met on item two. Conference of Hill State Negotiator involving Marina Del Mar property. Other negotiations are priced in terms for a potential extension of the lease. There's no action under the Brown Act to report at this time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And... Madam Clerk, please step forward, please.
Item twenty-one, request by Deputy Mayor Feller to direct staff to modify necessary ordinances to provide vehicles displaying a special recognition license plate as defined by the California Department of Motor Vehicles, the same parking privileges as those vehicles displaying a disabled license plate.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. This was brought to my attention by a fellow Oceanside resident, Purple Heart recipient in, as such, has a Purple Heart license plate. Um, with, in regards to the item, I have, uh, you know, I, I said in this that we were more or less asking for the same privileges, but not the same parking spaces as disabled, uh, public. Um, essentially, I'm asking for, um, and I left some copies of this on the back, and I think I forwarded everybody a copy of, uh, earlier, uh, last week. And in, in, uh, the vehicle, uh, DMV has special recognition license plates, and the samples are for Legion of Valor, um, Pearl Harbor Survivor, Prisoner of War, Purple Heart, and Medal of Honor, uh, Medal of Honor winners. Um, and essentially, what I'm asking is to change the, uh, ordinances in the city of Oceanside to allow for those special recognition plates to be, um, uh, free from parking fees such as parking in our parking lots, parking at our meters. And it probably result, results to no more than, uh, maybe three to five hundred times a year, more than likely, uh, in, in those locations. So, it, it could be more, but even so, it was, um, it was brought to my attention that they do this in the state park system. Uh, and the state park system allows them, uh, free parking. So, I, I think because we are a neighbor to, uh, Camp Pendleton, probably more so than other communities, we're committed to the military, and I would just ask that we, uh, ask staff to bring back the necessary, um, uh, approvals or, or changes in our ordinance for our approval, uh, to allow free parking for the special recognition plates. The disabled already have that privilege, uh, in their, um, specific locations, and I'm, I'm, as well, we allow them, disabled, uh, to park in our harbor in, in those, um, spots for, for nothing. So, um, it's not taking anything away from the disabled. It is strictly for, uh, the benefit of the, um, special recognition plates. And so, that would be my motion.
Please go ahead, the circuit.
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please, public.
We have one speaker, Jimmy Knott.
Mayor, councilmembers, given that one twenty-seven, Sherri Lane. At home today, I received about three different telephone calls on this, especially the way that this was phrased about taking and the same privileges as those displaying disabled license plates. Um, the reason why is that from a couple of disabled people, they were wondering about the reduction of the disabled, uh, plates up there, and from one business owner saying would they have to add additional pla, uh, places into their place. Um, I think that the way that this was clarified by Councilmember Feller, that it would not be just only for city lots and for city meter, meters only, and it would have to be directed as such, maybe posted as such, and it would not affect or be, you know, included or excluded for the, the handicapped spots. I think this is okay.
That's all the speakers.
Going back to counsel, Councilmember Faleen, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to get that point of clarification to confirm your, this, this would not allow people with the special license plates to park in handicap places. It's just a matter of, uh, parking in metered places without paying, correct? Or parking lots. But basically, it's, basically, uh, they're not paying the money. They get to park for free, to honor their recognition that they've, uh, gotten from the state. That was my concern too, was the issue of, uh, parking in disabled spots. So, if that's not the issue, then, you know, I don't have a problem.
Councilmember Sanchez, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that's why I second it, because of that clarification. Um, I was, I was, um, actually going to support, um, directing staff to, um, somehow have a workshop with the disabled community and see how, and with the business community, because it would impact the business community as well in terms of the number of, you know, disabled, um, spots having to be, um, increased, um, to share. And so, now that, that you've, that you've made that clarification, I can support it a hundred percent. Um, especially in Oceanside, we're certainly very, very proud of our veterans and military, um, families and, um, so, uh, I don't know how much this is going to impact, uh, but certainly, it's, it's something that's important. I'm glad you brought this up, and I'm glad for the, for the clarification. Something that I, we can, um, I feel very comfortable going forward with now versus having it any further kind of workshops or anything like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Curran, please.
Thank you. I, I just, I agree with the, the change, but I'm just a, you know, a little confused with the, what the request was, and it is so far a field from what was put on the agenda. Can we vote on it that way? Because that's, this has, it completely changes what the, the agenda item was.
Well, I, I think it's within the scope of what, what the agenda is. And we're just, you're just giving a referral back to the staff to then come forward, but, but this will require an amendment to our fee schedule, so.
Yeah, because I, I recently, I wish they would have put on the right way, because I got a lot of, um, feedback was, was written this way. It wasn't very favorable. So, the idea that with the change, I, I can go along with that change and to refer back to staff.
One of the privileges of having a disabled placard is that you don't have to pay the applicable fees. So, that's why it's within the scope of what we...
It's more restrictive.
Yeah, but the same parking privileges is, I mean, so that's, you know, and I guess, you know, Councilmember Faleen, the clarification about the handicap parking spaces, you know, that, that was the big concern of everybody out there about people with, that don't need the handicap parking spaces, parking in those spaces. So, this is just regular city lots and meters and that type of thing. So, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, please.
Arnold Mayor, councilmembers, actually, the vehicle code makes it very clear that only vehicles displaying a proper disabled license plate or placard are allowed to park in, uh, disabled spaces. So, if someone with a Purple Heart placard parked in a handicap space, they're going to get a ticket.
Deputy Mayor, this is your item, your last, please.
Thank you. I, I apologize for any confusion. I was trying to make it, uh, appear as the, the same privilege of free parking in our lots as disabled, and maybe I left out a word. So, thank you.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five out.
Madam Clerk, twenty-two.
Request by Deputy Mayor Feller to eliminate the city council aid positions and to allocate the savings to reopen the Marshall Street Pool and provide consolidated administrative and clerical support through the council, through the city manager's office and direction to staff.
Deputy Mayor, your item?
Thank you. Um, Luigi's going to put on the, uh, screen something that, uh, hopefully we can...
Say it.
The KOCT will be able to see. Um, uh, I'm bringing this item up for discussion because I believe we need to lead by example and examine our own department for ways to save money. On the overhead is a list of city council offices and their staffing levels. Uh, as you can see, we're the only city that employs five council aides at a cost of three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand per year. That means that we have sole discretion over those aides. Having, uh, five full-time council aides means paying vacation, sick leave holiday, and a variety of other paid days off for five people when all we need is one person to do this job. I recommend we eliminate all five council aid positions and have the city manager hire one person to handle phone calls, research, type, typing, and proclamations and other duties. It is, uh, noted on the breakdown, the position is more stable, uh, on the, uh, overhead than our council aid positions, because the staff person remains, no matter the outcome of each election. This would eliminate the added costs of hiring new council aides as a result of an election or every time one leaves the job. I believe my job is to do what is best for the citizens, and I think, uh, there was a time when this was a luxury for, for us as council members, because we were, uh, we are part-time. Uh, I think this, um, is the best for our citizens, and I think they would agree that applying those funds to reopening the Marshall Street Pool would be more beneficial to them than my having a personal council aide. Um, the, um, the, the council backup personnel that's on the screen, it, it shows Carlsbad, Chula Vista, Escondido, and Vista, all with support, um, for, um, the council members and the mayors. And it, it also says, uh, in, in El Cajon, city manager and mayor and council members, uh, and, and all those are full-time, uh, people, uh, that work for the city manager's office or through the city manager, uh, uh, office. So, um, and they are, they are more stable, because they stay there and represent, uh, all four members. So, um, I would like support for that, and, uh, I would, um, well, that's my, my request is, um, my motion, and, um, and I, I would like to hear what city, uh, the, the public has to say, if there is any.
Do we have a second?
Could you clarify the motion for me, please?
Uh, to eliminate the city council aid positions and to allocate the savings to reopen the Marshall Street Pool and provide consolidated administrative and clerical support to the council through the city manager's office.
Do we have a second? If not, it dies for lack of second, but I believe we still required to hear from the public. Is that correct? It's your city attorney. Do we have any firsts? How many?
Two.
Two.
Since it's on the agenda, you can hear from the public, but there will be no action taken. So, maybe no need to speak.
I just want to say that they've been here for the motion, so even though it dies for lack of second, but we're going to hear the public, two of them. Thank you. Please, Madam Clerk, two.
Hey, Jimmy Knott, Sheila Kada, and Francis Kozerski.
This is on this item four, one through two to four.
Correct, and Chris, Christopher Wilson.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, one twenty-seven, Sherri Lane. Years ago, when Betty Harding was a council member, I had a chance to sit down with her and talk with her off the record for quite some time. And she told me that, uh, the idea of the council aides here in Oceanside had to start with basically loaning city employees to take and help do work up and upstairs, letters needing to be typed, there's people to be contacted, and it expanded from that point. I don't know how true that was, but that's what she told me. Now, I would like to also take and point out some other possibilities that have not been explored. In other government offices and facilities, they use interns from other colleges and professional, uh, the preparatory colleges and high schools, things like that, to do intern work with helping the political office holders. Also in other communities as well, political campaign funds or PACs or private donations take and support aides to the public officials. So, there are other alternatives besides being on the public dole to take and help take and pay these people. Uh, so I wanted to bring those five ideas forward that could be actually done as an alternative.
Sheila Kada, fifty-three oh one Village Drive, Oceanside, California. I, I firmly don't go with this. I don't think we should get rid of any jobs. I think we need people that are elected to save all the jobs. And I think that you could take a pay cut across the board, especially with people that are making like two-hundred thousand or above a hundred thousand. They can take the highest pay cut and spread it across and keep everybody's jobs, and people need good jobs with benefits, and that's what keeps your, um, community strong. That's good. And so, for a council person to suggest to get rid of any jobs, he's not looking out for the best interest of the people of Oceanside, because the most important thing for any community is to have good-paying, strong jobs. And these are good-paying, strong jobs, and we need to keep them, and we need to fight to keep every kind of job like that there is. And we need to vote that council person out of office that wants to get rid of a job. Remember that.
Hello, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name's Francis Kozerski. I'm an Oceanside resident, matter of public record. I'm in opposition to this, um, suggestion by, uh, Councilmember Feller, um, getting rid of staff aides. Access to the city council is very difficult now since Anne Romero is no longer a front office person. It's like going to the Twilight Zone. There's nobody there. And now you're going to get rid of staff aides. Mayor Wood, you're a very busy person. You can only have your own family commitments. You have city of Oceanside business, plus the political campaign. I think it would be wrong to terminate Valerie Carpenter, because Valerie has access to the mayor's office. Um, Councilmember Sanchez, I think the same thing goes for you. Um, not having access to an aide, especially, uh, your current aide who is with pregnancy, I think it'd be wrong to send her out in the streets, a mother. Um, Councilmember Feller, um, Vicky has been there in times past when I needed her. For example, when we're trying to get the Kapitansky thing going, was able to talk to Vicky. When Rocky Chavez was, uh, mayor, I could talk to Jean at any time. Um, I just want you to know, when my father lived in Imperial Beach, I could go in and out of, uh, Juan Vargas' office and talk to four, five, or six staff aides, and there's no problem. But when I came back to Oceanside to live after my father died, I'd go in and out of Daryl Issa's office and be talking to young college kids that were political science majors. My recommendation, if this is an issue of funding, that you work with Parks and Recreation and do a big concert and raise money to have all the staff people that you need as, as staff aides or the council members and, and together. Okay? I don't want to see a single staff aide person going, because that's access to the city council. So, there's got to be a, a recommendation that has to do with money, raise the money, and make it, keep, keep Vicky's job, keep, keep your staff aide's job. Okay? I, I remember your staff Kyle. Kyle was looking for a job after he lost his job. So, you know, and, and Valerie Carpenter. So, anyway, try to, try to figure out a way to find the staff aide positions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Chris Wilson, seven seven zero, Harbor Cliff Way. Uh, I also oppose this, uh, this proposal that's been made, uh, but my main concern with it is the quality of the representation that the public receives. Uh, I really feel that, especially given that your positions are part-time, that you need someone full-time that you can rely on to help do research and look for facts to support your positions or possibly to provide, uh, you know, serve the, uh, the loyal opposition, uh, regardless of, you know, whichever way the, the facts fall on any given issue. But I really feel that without that support, that the quality of the representation that the public receives from you as our elected officials would be diminished. Uh, now, it may be that you could climb to one who is loyal, as has been suggested, uh, through going, uh, offering an internship program through Cal State San Marcos or some other local college, but to completely get rid of the aides and the people that are there to answer the phones and take questions from the constituents and to respond to emails as people send in their concerns that they have with, uh, issues that are before the council, I think, is an ill-conceived notion at best. Thank you.
Do we have a last, too?
That's all the speakers.
Um, Deputy Mayor?
Nobody wishing to speak. No other councilman?
No, second, sir, dies for lack of emotion.
Well, in, in light of, uh, this rebuke, I would say, uh, if my colleagues are not willing to eliminate the five council aides, um, I would have an alternate recommendation. Uh, we are part-time council members, um, and we need, we, I, I do like the fact that Vicky's there, sitting at her desk, able to answer the calls for everybody who isn't there. Uh, we need to have, uh, full-time accountability in representing, uh, us to the public and staff. The only way to do this, uh, would be to use a time clock supported by an accounting of how their time is spent. If they want to get paid the, the package of eighty thousand, seventy-eight thousand dollars a year, they need to be sitting in their chairs. Um, and I, and I strongly believe that. So, um, you know, for all this talk about outsourcing and the things that, that everybody is, uh, has been trying to do, um, you know, this is, this is a, a fine upstairs. So, um, I would, I would offer that up, uh, for, uh, this council.
Deputy Mayor, I'm here to start the agenda now. Should we can touch the whole check with the city attorney?
If I understand correctly, the request would be to have the council aides not eliminated, but simply, that, report their times, the time that they're in the office.
That is correct.
I, I don't think that there's necessarily an agenda issue we have had, because it's, the elimination is what is being proposed, or something short of that, I think you can discuss, but it's up to the council if you want to entertain that.
Like, with that information, city attorney, do we have a second on his motion? I see it dies for a lack of emotion, sir. And with that, thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. I'm sure we can all explain why we do and don't, but with that, can we go back to item number nine, please?
Under counsel reports, item nine is Mayor Wood.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is a fifth agenda. We can see that. I know people want to go home and see the presidential debate. I understand that. But a couple of things I want to say is that, uh, Great Harbor Days here in Oceanside, it's one of our biggest events down at the Oceanside Harbor, September the twenty-ninth. I want to thank everybody, and I believe everybody put such a fine showing for our city on Harbor Days. Not only was a great event, I agree, they're a little bit warm and a little bit muggy on that particular two days, but I had a great time. I got to say, the Nail and Sale was probably one of the best I've ever seen. I also want to congratulate the winning team. Oceanside Police Department won the Nail and Sale. So, I was very proud of them, and it was a wonderful weekend that really showcases Oceanside and the harbor. So, thank you for all those people. A lot of people get there way before us and set it all up. We really say thank you to you folks who are doing it, the Chamber of Commerce and everybody else that were involved as sponsors. Thank you. Also, a reminder, the up and coming Senior Expo, Senior Expo, another big event happening Saturday, August, excuse me, August, man. Saturday, October thirteenth, I'm way off on my base, October thirteenth, ten a.m. to two p.m. at the El Corazon Senior Center. Great event for seniors, a lot of stuff there that might help you in the future and your retirements and being a senior. Some of us up here at the diocese now fall into that category, including myself. I thank you for that. One last reminder, I did this at the last council meeting, but I wanted to make sure that everybody, that William Bond, William Bond, a former police and fire commissioner who passed away, uh, the week of September seventeenth, I got that referred back to me from the Police and Fire Commission, a former police officer who had died, a good friend of mine. So, I just want to remind everybody of that. That was the feedback from me from the Police and Fire Commission, and I thank you for that notification. But I did, uh, recognize his passing at the last council meeting, and that's all I have. Thank you. Be safe, and, uh, that's all.
Item ten, Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. I only have a couple of things. Uh, one is Oceanside Civitan just installed Ann Sparrow as their new president, um, just, just a week or so ago. And, um, we sort of had a family reunion here, uh, with, um, my sisters and brother and parents all, all coming to visit, uh, and, uh, actually, we, uh, did some campaigning, uh, walking neighborhoods, and, uh, it was a great time. But the most important thing is Jessica and Harvey Sanga, my daughter and her husband, had their eighth child yesterday at twelve thirty-eight. Uh, it's a, a wonderful addition. The little Hope Sanga is, uh, eight pounds, six ounces, and, uh, had, as her dad said, big hands, big mitts, and, uh, so probably a volleyball star or something coming. Uh, I figured it out now, and I'll be eighty-two when she graduates from high school. So, I'll be watching cheerleading or something all the way until then, for sure. Um, just, uh, have a great fall, and, uh, thank you, uh, Oceanside for, uh, providing a home for a really big Feller family. Thank you.
Item eleven, Justice Member Faleen.
Thank you. Just a couple of events as well. The second of the mayor, Harbor Days, uh, was spectacular, and congratulations to everyone who participated in the Nail and Sale. And also, uh, something that's become part of a regular event of Harbor Days is the Miss Southern California Children's Teens Pageant, and congratulations to all the, uh, young women and girls who participated in that and their families. And it's interesting, the Nail and Sale itself is also becoming an event in its own right of extreme popularity, and, yeah, who knows where that'll go, but it's, uh, quite, uh, amazing to watch. Also, I was privileged to, to attend the POW MIA Recognition Day Ceremony that took place, uh, on Camp Pendleton on September twenty-first. And also, wanted to mention that I, uh, did go on a police ride-along, uh, with the gang unit, uh, trying to get a little better understanding of, uh, what they do on a daily basis and see the side of the city that a lot of us don't get to see. And it's nice to know that, uh... And it's nice to know that the police are between us and them, and keeping it safe. And thank you to the department for the showing me this and the cooperation that they showed. Thank you.
Item 12, Councilmember Carron.
Thank you. As, this has been the first year in about 10 years that I have not been the logistics chair of Harbor Days. Actually, they hired a company to replace me. So, actually, it runs fairly smooth. Yet also... It's just the opposite, because I did it for free, and then they hired a company that actually did the work. They did a much better job, much more organized, much as far as... Because I used to have to get the fencing, I used to have to arrange the porta-potties, I used to have to do all those things for Harbor Days, and they hired a company that does it for all the big events throughout the county. And they do a wonderful job. So, the other thing that I had the privilege of starting, or actually seeing start, we started the next phase for our green waste recycling. They started pouring the slabs out there for the new green waste facility. You know, I've been involved for years. You know, we talk about zero waste and the green waste facility and the recycling of material out there. So, hopefully, they haven't finished all the slabs yet, so I encourage my colleagues to get out there and take a look at the facility and how it's done, because they multi-use the blowers as drains, and to recyc, and to pump air through these, to... When they grind up all the green waste. And then they're gonna have a Gore-Tex cover that's gonna be wetted down, so there's not gonna be any smell, because that's always been the complaint, especially at the senior center, of the smell of the green waste recycling. So, that's gonna be gone here in probably, yeah, about five or six months when they finally get things up and running. So, that's gonna be a great addition to that. And then also, we get, moving that to that facility, it opens up the space for the soccer fields at El Corazon. So, there's a lot of benefit going on here of moving that and actually, benefit to the people about recycling, benefit to the city, we have the soccer fields. And the only other thing that is coming up on October 13th, the same day as the Senior Expo is Pride at the Beach. I go every year for the last three or four years. It's a fun event. I mean, I encourage everybody to go down there, and they have different booths and things. So, just like one of these things we do at Betty's Lot, that we encompass everybody in the community. So, I encourage people to go. It's, like I said, it's a fun event. I go every year, and I plan on going again this year. So, thank you.
Item 13, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. In addition to all the events that have been announced, there's one other fantastic event that is kind of a tradition in Oceanside, and that is Saint Mary's Star of the Sea School, the luau. And that's Saturday, the 13th, which is a week from this Saturday, 3:00 to 7:00. The tickets are bargain, $20 for adults, $10 for kids. And let me read you the authentic Hawaiian dinner. It's Kahlua pig, chicken long rice, teriyaki chicken, rice, macaroni salad, fruit dessert, coffee and punch. And on top of that, some really, really wonderful entertainment, music, and the dancers, especially the kids. It's just amazing how they're able to carry on a tradition that they do. Saint Mary's, it's been around forever, has... So many of our kids have gone through. That was where I went to catechism, way back when. And so, for tickets, let's see. You can call the school at 760-722-7259. 722-7259. So, come on down, you'll have a wonderful, wonderful time. And thank you to the sisters for continually, you know, doing such a great and fun, a great job in bringing it forward year after year. Takes a lot of work to do something like that. And Linda and Mike Schuster, thank you so much, and at all. It's a family kind of a thing. Family, I mean, you know, and friends. The other thing I wanted to let everyone know is that I was... I had been working for probably well over a year on some pro bono work with Costa Serena. And it is such a wonderful, wonderful community. It was not hard for me to say, sure. Started with a letter, and of course, things always, you know, happened beyond that. And so, I was honored to get a plaque from the divine, showing their, certainly their appreciation. But to me, it was a labor of love to work with such wonderful seniors. Our senior communities are so important to Oceanside that for anyone to suggest that there should not be senior communities, especially when they were built, to, you know, not be able to accommodate families, kids, you know, areas, play areas, that it truly is very, very important to our city that we have our senior community. So, thank you, Costa Serena, and that's it.
Adam Clark, if you would. I know we have two items continued, 16 and 17. Can you announce it, and before we go to the break?
Yes. Public hearing, item 16, establishing wastewater user rates, and item 17 regarding a conditional use permit for a pawn shop have both been continued. They will be heard on October 17th.
Thank you. With that, ladies and gentlemen, a short agenda, but I have public item hearings that are on time certain. We'll come back at 5:00 in address, so we'll take about a 20-minute break for everybody to come back at 5:00. I only have a few things, and then three agenda items. Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. A couple of things. This is split up into kind of the two council meetings. We'd had one at 4:00 with the consent council and a few other things. Now, we're in the regular council meeting. We have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance, which I'll ask you to stand. But before that, if you've got a pager or a cellphone, could you put it on vibrate or silent? We'd appreciate it, number one. And then after the pledge, you can be seated, and we'll go on with some presentations, and then the rest of the council. Thank you very much, and again, welcome. Valerie, please.
At this time, we would call forward Reverend Malachi Tauriili from the Oceanside Samoan Congregational Church of Mesa Margarita.
Pastor, here.
Let us pray. O God, the Creator of the heavens and of the earth, we are living in a country that adheres to one nation under God. We thank thee for this torch of faith handed to us by our forefathers. May we never let it be extinguished, for thou alone hast given us our prosperity, our freedoms, and our power. We ask that you guide, bless, and protect our leaders, O Lord. Bless our mayor and our councilmen and councilwomen of this great city of Oceanside. Grant our leaders, O Lord, uncompromising courage to do what is morally right. Grant them also the compassion to assist those who are in physical, moral, and spiritual need. Instill within our leadership the power of love, love that creates unity where there is division, love that transforms foes into friends, love that creates peace where there is discord. We pray, O Lord, for our armed forces, our men and women serving within the military. We pray, O God, that you grant them strength, whether serving at home or overseas. Bless them and their families during their time of service for their country. Return them home safely under thy divine protection. We pray these things, along with the silent prayers of those gathered here today, in the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Leading us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance is Elky Wills from the San Diego Humane Society, and with her tonight, Peppermint Patty.
Here, ladies and gentlemen.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. You may all be seated.
Very appreciated, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for having myself and Peppermint Patty. Peppermint Patty is a pit bull mix. She's two and a half years old, and as you can tell, very spunky, very energetic. We think that she would do best in a very athletic home, somebody who's wanting to take her out exercising, maybe enroll her in some training classes. But as you can see, she's getting a head start with some of her tricks. Let's see if we can get her to perform here. Shake, nice, yeah. Beautiful, beautiful. Our trainers and our adoption counselors are working really hard with some of the animals in our care to, you know, make them a little more... Ooh, she does an army crawl as well. She loves the play pool, the kiddie pool, and they say she'll do anything for a tennis ball, which a lot of our dogs can have a tendency to want to do that, but I think they're really ready to learn and want to perform for you as well. So, right now, we have, we just started Adopt a Shelter Dog Month, which is on the month of October, it's a national campaign. And what we're doing is a promotion called Dare to Bull or Leave, where we're spotlighting the pit bulls in our care and many of the successes that we've had. So, what we're doing is we're hoping to promote responsible ownership, which includes offering for the public. We're doing free microchipping for pit bull mixes. We have some limited state neuter opportunities. So, if you know anybody who needs a pit bull, state or neutered, have them call me, and we'll get them on the list. We also, you can get a free name tag at On the Peak Store. This sensation harness here is in wonderful way. Mine's a little large, so I don't have as much control as I should. But this is a great option and alternative to the choke chain and to the prong collar. So, if you go in and you have a pit bull mix, you bring them in, we fit you appropriately, properly, not like this is. And you get a 30% discount. And then if you have a choke chain or a prong collar, you can bring that in, and we'll trade that in for a 50% discount. We're doing a pit bull beauty contest on October 20th at the dog park. So, there's just a lot of opportunities. And then if a pit bull is not what you're interested in adopting, if you adopt any dog in the month of October, we have a free meal coupon from one of the San Diego Home Cooking Restaurants in San Diego. So, there's a lot going on. I invite you to go to our website and see what we're doing, but we just want to promote what wonderful companions they can be and what successes we've had, and also get people in the community to embrace being responsible and making sure they're doing the right thing for their animals. Thank you. Oh, and the dog park, she would love... I'm trying to think, does she go with other dogs? I think she's good with other dogs. But, you know, getting them out, making sure they're socialized properly from the time they're little to the time they grow up, and so they can engage in such activities as the dog park or the dog beach.
First off, thank you for bringing them. I take my dogs to the off-leash park. Have them for big dogs and small dogs. It's a social gathering for everybody. That's what I keep repeating. It's a wonderful down there, two and a half acres, a little more than two and a half acres. Hatching dogs run free off of leashes. These are wonderful dogs. Everybody thinks they're mean if they're brought up properly. These are great dogs. This one's very well-trained. I wanted to bring it to your attention because I think it'd be a good mascot for like a scout trip like 752, or somebody else in the audience that might want to have a dog or a church pastor. He sounds good. I want to thank you for being here, it's all your time. Thank you very much.
Now, at this time, we will be having the presentation for the Employee Service Awards. And we would call forward into the diocese circle, both council members and our directors that are present. And Alicia Hicks from Human Resources will be presenting.
Thank you.
It is with great pleasure tonight that I present to you the employees who have reached their 20 and 30 years of service. When I say your name, please come to the middle of the diocese. Rita Mendoza. Rita began her career with the city on July 27, 2012. She is currently working in the Housing Department as a Housing Specialist One. Let's help her celebrate with a round of applause. Thank you, Rita. Next up is Jeremy Kemp. Jeremy began his career with the city on September 8, 1992. He is currently working in the Water Utilities Department as a Utility Supervisor. Let's help him celebrate with a round of applause. Thank you, Jeremy. This concludes our 20 years of service recipients. Next, we have our 30-year service recipients, starting with Roberta Regulias. Roberta started with the city on August 15, 1982. Roberta is currently working in the Water Utilities Department as a Senior Office Specialist. Let's help celebrate with a round of applause. Thank you, Roberta. Last, but definitely not least, we have Kenneth Wallace. Kenneth started with the city on August 12, 1982. He is currently working in the Water Utilities Department as a Mechanical Technologist. Let's help celebrate with a round of applause. This concludes our presentation tonight. Thank you, and congratulations, everyone.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's really an honor when we have employees stay around that long and do wonderful services for the public. Like I say... Like I say, 20, 30, 40 years of service, we have a lot of them, and I want to thank them for what they do for the city. Before I get started, I'd like to have a couple of recognitions if I can have the KOC T respond. Could I have the troop 752 stand up for the TV here? Everybody from 752, just stand up and be recognized. You can put them on camera, I push order, and thank you very much. Thank you for being here, folks, I appreciate it. Other than that, Madam Clerk, uh, one more time, would you make sure that 16 and 17 have been noticed?
Okay, item 16 and 17, public hearing items, are continued to October 17. They will not be heard tonight.
With that, Madam Clerk, with item number 18, please.
Approval to appropriate...
Excuse me, ma'am, excuse me, if I will, I am in a backup, I know we had speakers of public communications, if we may, I'm going to do that first.
Okay, item 15, communications from the public regarding items not on this agenda. We have three speakers, Fred Murray, Sheila Keta, and Francis Kazursky.
Please come up first, number one. You have two podiums, if you're waiting for somebody, take the other podium, they might be able to help you. Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Fred Murray, 2409 Dinston Street in Ocean Side. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to once again help me publicize our event, Speak Out Ocean Side. It is a nonpartisan, public forum, town hall style event, and I'd like to cordially invite all Ocean Side citizens to come and show their vision of Ocean Side. We're very encouraged by the increase in the number of co-invaders, we're anticipating a good show of voters, and I would also like to cordially invite the council members to come. We'd love to have you come and show your vision of Ocean Side, we're going to make sure that the rules of civility are in play. We'd love to have you, and once again, shout out to all the members, all citizens of Ocean Side, please feel free to come and join us, October 18, Thursday from 6 to 8. It should be fun and it could be a chance for you to speak your piece. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
My name is Sheila Keta, 5301 Village Drive, Ocean Side, California, and I want to invite you to an evening of politics and empowerment and meet Jerry Tuttleman, he's running for Congress in our district, the 49th district. There's going to be live music by the Jackson Austin Singer Project, there's going to be a movie, Pray the Devil Back to Hell, which is the story of a brave and visionary woman who demanded peace for Liberia and won the Nobel Peace Prize for her efforts. It's Sunday, October 14, at 5:00 PM at the Carlstadt Village Theater, 2822 State Street. The tickets are $20 and the seating is limited, and for tickets and campaign updates, visit jerrypourcongress2012.com or call 760-542-8190, or you can get it from me. Thank you.
Francis, head of the family emergency, and he asked for me to read this in his place. Valerie Monique Alvarado, 32, was fatally shot by a Border Patrol agent in Chula Vista. She was allegedly backing up her car when the shots were fired. Ten News has been covering the story. Alvarado is the mother of five children. A police investigation is reviewing the shooting in Chula Vista. A vigil for the Alvarado family is being planned Monday evening. Remembering the Alvarado family in your prayers tonight, please. October 11, 2001, Stephen Kazursky died from gunshot wounds in the stomach. Stephen was unarmed when a San Diego sheriff deputy opened fire on an unarmed man. The ACLU website covered Stephen Kazursky's shooting on the website. Stephen Kazursky is buried in Eternal Hill Cemetery here in Ocean Side. A vigil is planned from 6:00 PM on October 10, that is a Wednesday, in memory of 10/11, October 11, a date of Stephen Kazursky's death. Thank you.
We have two late requests?
Please.
Kim Heim and David Nydecker?
Never mind.
I'm not on the agenda.
I have great, great harbor days, thank you.
Well, I'm a member of the council, that's precisely why I wanted to come up and address you today and say thank you to the city of Ocean Side. Everybody in the public sector just went out of their way to help us with, I think, the best harbor days we've had in a long, long time. There was a lot of folks there, having a lot of fun. We showcased that marvelous harbor that we have down there. Really a kudos, shout out to Frank Quan and the maintenance folks in the harbor, they were always there. The police, the harbor police, the lifeguards, everybody, it was just outstanding. The only drawback, of course, is a lifeguard's boat sank during nail and sail. But other than that, and but the police department won it overall, they were fantastic. It was a great day, it was a great day for Ocean Side and our harbor, and I want to thank you and the city.
Thank you, David, we appreciate it.
So David, why don't I get my hammer back?
You don't have to know when to get in the hammer.
Get it from the hell.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have one item that I neglected earlier.
Move, go right ahead, sir.
A good friend and a great sandwich eater, police officer Armand Dusset, passed earlier this month, or late last month. And Armand was a regular at my store for 10 years, and he was 29 years on the Ocean Side Police Department, and I would appreciate being able to close this meeting in honor of Armand Dusset.
I'd love to, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item 18?
Oh, we're finished with public, thank you very much. Item 18, please.
Item 18, approval to appropriate $140,486 from the fiscal year 2012-2013, CDBG program entitlement grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to the CDBG contingency fund for fiscal year 2012-2013 projects. Approval to allocate funds in the amount of $50,000 from the CDBG contingency fund to the Brook Street Swim Center improvements, and approval to amend the 2012-2013 action plan.
Thank you. As a mayor, open this public hearing and ask your disclosures and council members, start with you.
Staff, hon.
None.
Staff.
None.
Staff. Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, the correspondence or petition?
No correspondence.
Thank you very much. With that, Ms. Turk, good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. As Holly so eloquently stated, basically, we are required by law to have a public hearing regarding CDBG monies, and we are asking for $50,000 for Brook Street Swim Center. Basically, $140,000 minus $50,000 would be $90,000 as a contingency money that was rolled over from last year's projects that all the money wasn't utilized. This is HUD money, housing and urban development, and it's just part of doing business to come and do a public hearing for this evening. We're hoping to have termite work done and repairs of the Brook Street Swim Center, it's in dire need of work.
Thank you, Ms. Turk, have a seat at sidebar while we continue. Madam Clerk, please.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward to either podium.
Madam Clerk, I see none, so I'll close the public hearing and come back to the council. Councilmember Sanchez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to move approval. The Brook Street Pool is an institution in Ocean Side, it's where I learned how to swim when I was knee-high to the grasshopper, so that was a bit ago. Back in the day, in high school, you had to pass a swimming class in order to graduate. So I think we should have that.
I think so.
We should still have that. But anyway, this is a wonderful, wonderful thing that we have in Ocean Side, and it certainly does need this kind of tender loving care, so absolutely move approval.
Thank you. Do you have a second? I'll say, may I have a second, Madam Clerk? With that, any further comments? I see none, please vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Ms. Turk, I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, can we jump to 20, please?
Item 20 is consideration of a zone amendment and local coastal plan amendment, amending the sign ordinance, Article 33 of the 1986 and 1992 zoning ordinance, to regulate commercial mascots, advertising displays and feather banners, as well as minor administrative changes, and establishing the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program, and adoption of a resolution and introduction of an ordinance to affect these changes, the applicant is the city.
Thank you very much. Again, as a mayor, open this public hearing and ask your disclosures. Again, I'll say, will you, John?
Staff, and we've received considerable input over the last several months.
Yeah, it seems like the whole world almost, certainly plenty of public, plenty of businesses, staff.
Similar to those previous public hearing on this item, so quite a bit. Esther?
Staff.
Staff and public, and before we go forward, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for taking the lead on this and coordinating the public input on this, so I think this is one of these public-private partnerships, so thanks, David, and the rest of the Chamber of Commerce for getting involved, so thank you.
Thank you. With that, good evening, Amy, it's been a while since I've seen you here, welcome.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The proposal before you today involves a local coastal program amendment and zoning ordinance text amendment for the Ocean Side sign ordinance, RCPA 1205 and zoning amendment 1206. On April 18, 2012, the City Council approved a local coastal plan program amendment and a zoning amendment that revised and updated the prior sign regulations to ensure regulation in a constitutional manner, distinguished the regulatory from the proprietary standard, set parameters for advanced sign technologies, digital signs, and updated the existing ordinance format. By that action, the two ordinances, the 1986 sign ordinance and the 1992 sign ordinance were reconciled, and today we have, you know, subject to approval by the coastal commission, we will have one single sign ordinance that we will be implementing. At that time, there were a couple, a few comments made by members of the public and the Chamber of Commerce with respect to provisions or the prohibition of commercial mascot signage and feather banner signs. The City Council gave direction to coordinate and assist the Chamber of Commerce to bring forward a sign amendment for such provisions, and this evening, we would be presenting the information that came out from meetings that were held at the Chamber with its membership and with the support of city staff. The Chamber of Commerce recommended amendments to the sign ordinance include provisions that would allow feather banners on private property, would not permit exemptions of those banners over the right of way, would require a minimum spacing of eight feet between banners, a maximum height of 15 feet or the building height that it would be adjacent to or on the property of, whichever is less, and would be maintained in good condition at all times. With regard to the commercial mascots, it is being recommended that they are allowed on public sidewalks during the daytime hours between sunrise and sunset. They are, a commercial mascot are located in a way that would not interfere with ingress and egress or free use of sidewalks. There's a maximum of two commercial mascots per street intersection corner and a 10-foot separation between commercial mascots, and there will be no sign displays, no sign display exhibits of airborne signs. Should the City Council decide that those recommended provisions would be included this evening, we have prepared an ordinance to approve these amendments to Article 33 of the 86 and 92 zoning ordinance and adopt a resolution approving a local coastal program amendment establishing Article 33A and 33B zoning regulations within the coastal zone. I should also add that in addition to the regulations that I just mentioned, there were some minor cleanup items that we've also included as part of legislative draft. The first one is deletion of references to the redevelopment agency and to the redevelopment director of economic and community development, and also any references for provisions to the redevelopment area, there would be, the following item would address provisions within the downtown area, and Shan and Kathy will address those. That concludes my presentation. Very briefly, I'll be glad answering questions you may have.
Thank you, and I have a seat at sidebar, Judge over there, and we'll move forward from that point.
This is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, please come forward, line up at both podiums. You have three minutes to speak.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, David Nydecker, I'm the president and CEO of the Ocean Side Chamber of Commerce, and we're very, very pleased with the progress that we made on this particular issue, and we strongly urge that you vote in favor of it. This came out from a meeting last April. We were asked to help with that, and I cannot thank Mr. George Bull and Amy with the city for all their hard work and efforts in making this happen. This was something that wasn't even in our code, this is something that was just out there and no one was treating it, no one was looking at it. The business community came together, we all were in agreement about what works and what shouldn't work, and I'm just very, very pleased with the results, and I urge you to vote approval. Thank you.
My name is Carl Hager, I live at 3839 families, of course, in Ocean Side and one of the businesses, and what I want to do is thank the planning commission because I was part of the group that, business group that worked with them, and they put a lot of effort in making sure they heard our comments and incorporating them in this, and I really appreciated their effort, and that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
I see no further people on this one, Ms. Holly, I'll close the public hearing, come back to the council. First off, I want to say I appreciate the people that got involved with city staff, trying to help out the business community and the Chamber, certainly made it easier for all of us, thank you very much. With that, let's get back to councilor attorney, please.
Thank you. I guess I'll make the motion that we introduce an ordinance approving amendments to Article 33 of the 1986, 1992 zoning ordinance, and establish Article 33A and 33B as a new sign ordinance text, and to adopt a resolution approving the local coastal program amendment and establish Article 33A and 33B as zoning regulations within the coastal zone.
Do we have a second, please? I'll second. Thank you. I've seen there further in lineup, so Mr. City Attorney, please.
Yeah, I had all the introduction of the ordinance. This is the introduction of an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Ocean Side, amending Article 33 of the city's zoning ordinance, modifying the city's sign regulations.
Excuse me before I vote, councilor probably have a...
I did have one comment.
Go ahead.
I know that we have a lot of feather banners out there right now, and about 50% of them are in bad shape, so how are you going to, how is city staff going to make the compliance come into effect? We have, what, 30 days before the ordinance takes place? Is that about right?
We have to do adoption and then 30 days.
Okay, so we have some time to forewarn banner users.
Councilmember Feller, in answer to your question, my understanding, based on statements that the city manager made at the public hearing preceding this on this issue, is that this would be on the honor system in terms of how we would approach this. It is, it would be a code enforcement issue, but given our limited financial and staffing resources at this time, it would not be a priority for code enforcement.
So we're not going to have a feather banner code enforcement officer?
No, sir.
I didn't think so, but is there somehow, we're going to notify all businesses? I didn't think so, but is there somehow we're gonna notify all businesses, in some form or fashion, water bills, something like that?
We can work, we can, we can explore ways of informing the business community and maybe in terms of sending out a postcard to, to businesses that are observed with, with the feather banners, but we can also work with the Chamber of Commerce and seeing how we can most effectively reach their membership as well.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Madam Clerk, when you have the opportunity, item number nineteen, please.
Introduction of an ordinance adding Article thirty-three C signage to the Oceanside zoning ordinance and repealing Article thirty-three of the nineteen ninety-two zoning ordinance and establishing Article thirty-three C as the new sign ordinance for downtown, and adoption of a resolution approving a local coastal plane amendment for the downtown project area. The applicant is the city.
Thank you. As the chairperson, I'll open this public hearing and request disclosures from commissioners and Councilmember Kern, I'll start at your end.
We've been kinda wrestling around this for almost two, two and a half years. I, longer, well, when I was on the rack, so a lot of public input, a lot of staff time over and over again, so I talked about this quite a bit. So it's public and staff?
Most recently, staff.
A lot of contact and feedback over several meetings, just staff and the public. Staff and public. I'll wait on Councilmember Feller, other than that, I was waiting for him to come back, if not, but we'll go ahead. As Madam Secretary, correspondence, petitions?
Please proceed, no correspondence.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll go forward with Kathy, good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. As Councilwoman Kern said, we've been working on this for quite a number of years and we're really excited to bring this forward. This item before you is kind of a piggyback item of the previous item that you just heard. In essence, what the city is doing for their entire citywide sign ordinances, we're creating Article thirty-three A, Article thirty-three B, and this would be Article thirty-three C specific to the downtown. A lot of people have asked, you know, how come, why did this get started? And really, we started thinking about this several years ago with Wyndham and, and some of the development that was happening in the downtown. So we decided to have a series of meetings and it started out with actually an ad hoc committee with the rack members and some of the planning commission members. We created a subcommittee with a lot of the local business owners. We had some people from the art commission and sign manufacturers at the table to find out, you know, what were the needs, what were the desires, and then just basically how do we implement it. We wanted to increase the flexibility while being creative and allowing for different things in the downtown that you might not otherwise consider elsewhere in the city. A lot of people have asked, you know, why is the downtown different? And for the most part, if you look at the characteristics in the downtown, we have many narrow storefronts, we have historic buildings, both current development and future development exceeds five stories in height, is built over an entire city block with the implementation of the Mission Avenue improvements. We wanted to create a more walkable environment. The classic story I've heard is that where somebody's coming from the downtown and they're walking up Mission Avenue, they get to Coast Highway and they look across the street and they don't see any signage that would attract them to go across Coast Highway to go visit that restaurant or bead store or what have you. So by allowing some of the signs that we're proposing, it's going to entice people to travel and walk around the downtown more freely. And then also, the urban downtown is entirely different than the shopping center, you know, out east. So the summary of the changes that we're proposing are increasing the sign height for walls and logos, allowing for both projecting and vertical signs, again, so people can see them while you're walking the streets and easily in your cars, allowing for menu boards for a lot of downtown restaurants, kind of like most downtown, you walk around, you see a menu out front, encourage you to go in and try the restaurant, providing new regulations for wall murals, and then also allowing for signage on all four sides of the building. Currently, the sign ordinance only allowed for two sides and that was a huge request by the Wyndham that they wanted to have at least three sides and I'm pretty sure going forward in the future, the city marked blocks are also gonna want more than the ability to have signs on, on two buildings. I just threw this quick slide together just to give you an idea of some of the things that, you know, we're hoping to kinda see in the downtown. Again, this, also, we're allowing for three lines of text, which currently isn't allowed, and allowing some creativity like little icons such as this to, to, to give it a better feel for, in a character for the downtown. This is an example of a vertical sign. Here's a, it's not only a vertical, but a projecting sign. This is just an example of some artwork. Down here, you see a menu board, again, projecting signs, and then again, some of the historic buildings, even though this particular building's not historic, we'd like to encourage the use of old historic signage that seems to be coming back, there seems to be a renaissance of that going forward right now. So with that, I know we wanted to keep it short tonight, so I was trying to keep it short and sweet, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you, please, Kathy, have a seat at sidebar.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to, please come forward, line up at each podium. If you turned in the slip, I will not be calling your name.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I should declare.
I'm sorry, you're right, please.
I, I had contact with staff, this has been an ongoing issue, so.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate you reminding me.
Mayor, councilmembers, June eleven twenty-seven, Sher Lane. In meetings that I attended, what was brought up also was the electronic signage as an example for public kiosks, you know, taking in for information, directing people for, let's say, specials at different stores or different restaurants, for theater, what's going on potentially in theaters, art displays, things like that that could be brought up in specials, small little ones in restaurants in front of them. I did not see anything here being basically shared with you about electronic kiosk or electronic signage. You may want to ask about that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Heim, Main Street, Oceanside, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. I wanted to make a, an opportunity to support this. Five years ago, Kathy started with a subcommittee on this issue. It really got off to a good start because it was grounded with the industry. The signage industry played a big role in helping tell us what the trajectory of commercial signage was gonna be in the next fifteen years. And with that, we were able to retool the sign ordinance that could be tailored to the downtown setting, unique building forms, various ages of buildings, setbacks, coverage ratios, it really allowed the flexibility necessary to be able to provide the type of signage that new investors are gonna want to put in the downtown over the next twenty years. It does cover every element from literally standard signage that covers building frontage down to electronic signage that will essentially replace print signage in the next five, ten years from now. So it's very forward-looking, it's very well thought out, had input from various cities in California, we had some well-thought-out sign ordinances as well, and it had a lot of collaboration from the community, so I've asked the council to support this and I think it's a good start for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Does anyone else wish to address this item?
Madam Clerk, I see none, I'll close the public hearing, come back to the council. Councilmember Kern, please.
Thank you, I, the one thing at this point I'm, tonight, is that Rick Wright's not here to be part of this, because Rick from Main Street, Oceanside's been a part of this for a long, long time and he really pushed this forward. There was one question, did, were you gonna address that, Mr. Knott's question about that? I'll, I'll do that and if you can come back to me after you address that question, it'd be helpful. Oh, yeah, I, I, just before we move forward, we ought to have all the questions answered.
Yes, we are, I'm going to allow for some electronic use in some instances in the downtown.
Okay, case by case?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is that on the El Corazon Committee years ago, we were talking about the Village Commercial, where we were gonna have some high-density, you know, mixed use out there, that we were talking, some, something similar to this is signage too on that Village Commercial. Are we going to, maybe it's not the appropriate time until we actually have a Village Commercial about taking some of that signage out there, because this just addresses the downtown.
Correct, this is just addressing the downtown, however, something similar to this, large subdivisions can have their own sign, proposed sign ordinance or, or text for large shopping centers, so you could certainly do that for El Corazon.
Okay, well, thank you. With that, I'd like to introduce an ordinance adding Article thirty-three C signage to the Oceanside Downtown zoning ordinance, Z A two hundred dash oh nine, and replacing Article thirty-three of the nineteen ninety-two zoning ordinance and establish Article thirty-three C as a new signed ordinance for downtown and the adoption of a resolution approving local coastal plan amendment, R L C P A twelve dash zero 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 one for the downtown project area. I'll second.
And we have a second on that, thank you very much. Please vote. Excuse me, I'm trying, thank you.
I think Councilmember McKern stole my thunder, but I actually have to title the ordinance, I apologize. You did, but, as Councilmember McKern mentioned, you have a buzzer in front of you for the last two amendments, and I don't need to title that, I don't need to title any ordinance. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside adopting Article thirty-three C of the Oceanside zoning ordinance, regulating signs on private property in the downtown project area.
With that, please vote, thank you very much.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. If I may, we're gonna be closing here, hopefully we can get home time to watch the debate on TV, but I will be adjourning this meeting until Wednesday, October seventeenth, two P M., but Deputy Mayor had made the announcement earlier and I'll go along with that. We have a gentleman who's well-known in town, Armand Dusset, who was a police lieutenant for twenty-nine years. When I came on the police department in the late sixties, and I don't wanna age myself, but when I came on the late sixties, he was my lieutenant and this man scared me to death when I was a rookie, but later on I found out, all bark, no bike, great guy, and I really appreciate him. Passed away this last Sunday after battling cancer for a while. A good friend to the community, mine and everybody probably up here at the council. I would like to close and say thank you for a moment of silence for a good man who passed away in the city of Oceanside, if we can, please. For just a few seconds in memory of Armand Dusset, thank you. Thank you, ladies and, good night, be safe.